...and the things that we're doing. So who wants to tell us what it is that we're approving? I know we've got contracts and we've got an agenda amendment, I assume.
Yes, so we'll have a contract for our warehouse space, but Ashley would probably have better background information on that.
Yep, and if it's okay Chairman, I'll defer to Jeff to kind of tell us why we needed this building, and then if it's okay, if it pleases the Commissioners, I'll tell you more about the building, the contract, and where we go moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, as you know, we've experienced the probably the largest disaster Western North Carolina has seen since the 1916 flood. During my past background, I've seen a lot of disasters. This is my 37th declared declaration that I've worked throughout the country. And yeah, the magnitude is down. By the grace of God, Caldwell County fared pretty well. Now, that don't mean we don't have a lot of issues. That don't mean we don't have a lot of issues that we are aggressively dealing with every day. One of the things that we always run into during these type of disasters is, is American people are very giving people. I mean, they will during a time of disasters. We don't come together a lot, but for a period of time, we will come together. Gosh knows, I think Sheriff's talked about that in one of the meetings, about how just everybody's coming together. He's been out in the field a bunch. So we're getting a lot of donations coming in. We had an opportunity, went through Economic Development, actually Johnny on the spot, and they found us the old Hickory Springs Manufacturing down there on Norwood Street. If you reference to it, this is below the North Fire Department Station Number Two. It's a 90,000 square feet warehouse. That's just, to get that, to get a 90,000 square feet warehouse, I think it's got eight loading docks. That's going to be our central receiving and distribution point that's going to be coming, of all the things coming in here. We're also going to use it for donations management. Currently, there is our National Guard sale that got here today, and we've had them helping deliver goods out into the community. And I'm also asked for a donations management team coming out of National VOED. VOED stands for Volunteer Organizations in Disaster. Now, the reason this shelter, excuse me, the reason this distribution center is getting so much attention, got a lot of phone calls all today, it's 90,000 square feet. Now, the state's very interested in to assist with it because we can use it as a regional thing, because our stuff will progressively start working down. You know, there's areas in northwestern North Carolina, take Ash, take Watauga, take Avery, and even in some in the Mitchell. This is a long, long process. So we're very fortunate to have this opportunity. Economically, we feel like it's very, very fair. Like I said, I actually was, you know, Johnny on the spot with this, and we feel like this is just a good opportunity for us to enter in on this contract. And I guess one of the things that is always important is how we're going to pay for it. Now, we do have to pay for it upfront, there's no doubt about that. But this is, we are federally declared to the declaration right now. It was, I don't recall the declaration number. We got individual assistance, and we also got public assistance. We refer to that as PA, Public Assistance. Now, that's a little confusing, but public assistance means government. So every aspect of this, we can, we will be reimbursable. And that's the reason that the Tony will have to do a budget amendment, and then once we do the project, information's ended up FEMA, we get a check back, and we're totally refunded. You say the price, the price is negotiated on fair market value. The reason, yeah, the reason there'll be no issues about getting the money back, because fair market value in Caldwell County for warehouse space versus fair market value in Catawba County, or Mecklenburg County, or something like that, there's no comparison. So that's our goal. We have, we have the optimistic goal that we can probably get started maybe some as early as tomorrow, but I'm going to say more like Friday, more like Saturday, by the time we get all the pieces of the puzzle together. And I'll leave it to Ashley to discuss the finer points of the project.
Thank you, Jeff. So when Trevor and team reached out and said, "We need space, we got tractor-trailer loads coming this way, and we got nowhere to put it," well, take that back. We had places to park tractor-trailer loads, but we didn't have places to unload, sort, and send out or distribute from there. We looked at our current inventory, and just so happens that the HSM plant on Norwood Street, they're consolidating and moving all their operations to their new Conover facility. So that space was going to be ready for lease as early as October 1st. So I have a pretty good relationship with that realtor, that broker, Mr. Stump. I reached out to him on Sunday to let him know that we were probably going to need some space, and to see if he could start working with the owner. And as soon as he got in touch with them on Monday, they were really willing to help, so much so that they're waiving all the normal real estate commission fees. So what we're asking the Commissioners to approve tonight is a three-month lease of the building with a 30-day notice to vacate. And then we can renew for an additional month at a time, up to another six months. There's no security deposit down, which is really unheard of. The rate is $3.53 per square feet, which, as Jeff alluded to, is market value for Caldwell County, but it's really below market value if you look at other surrounding comparable buildings. That does not include utilities, so we'll pay the extra utilities that they have on the building, water and electricity going forward. And we can occupy the building as soon as tomorrow, assuming that the contract is executed tonight. And again, as already mentioned, they're waiving all the normal fees associated with this type of deal. So what we have, again, for you to approve tonight, hopefully, is a contract to lease that building for three months for a total of $25,000 a month. And that is FEMA reimbursable. And the utility expense would be FEMA reimbursable as well.
Anything come with the building? I think you're probably going to need forklifts and things of that nature.
So VESCO, Toyota, in Catawba County, we reached out to them, and they actually already had a contract with HSM and have machines there. But what they have there are 15,000-pound forklifts, and what we think we need is like a 3,000 and a 5,000. So VESCO has, because it's storm-related, waived the first two months. So there's no fee, and they're not charging us a freight fee either, because they already have equipment in the building. But they're coming tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., assuming everything goes well, to take out the 15,000 and bring us the 3,000 and the 5,000-pound forklift. And if we need it beyond the two months that they're giving it to us for free, they're going to give it to us at a rate 50% their normal rate. And it's all because it's storm-related.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions of Ashley or Jeff on this subject?
Manpower for the building. Who's going to be the people we have in there?
Right now, we have a five-person team from our National Guard. I asked for what's called a logistic C2 force pack. Because of, Armin and Guardsmen scattered out pretty much all over Western North Carolina, they've got five. That particular sale asked for 11. Now, we will not be operating that facility for 24 hours. I don't know what, exactly what the times will be. I mean, we definitely will be after work hours, but you know, we're not going to operate at 24 hours. And we've also, like I mentioned, Mike, we've got the National VOED Center. I put a request in, and we're pretty confident we're going to get a team to at least manage it for 12, 14 days. Now, because it's going to be regional, and that's kind of what I wanted to keep it regional, because as long as it's regional, they're going to let the Guard be here. So that's why I kind of wanted that. So, I mean, they're going to rotate personnel in and out, but I feel like they'll be here. And also, National VOED, with it being regional, that they can keep people here until, I mean, till the need dies down. And I don't see that happening until at least middle of October. Certainly not in Caldwell County. I think our needs will, I mean, our long-term housing needs won't be met, but I think the volunteer part of it, or I think the donated goods part will be met probably by the end of October. But with this being regional, and that's the key, I think we'll keep that for a period of time. And then also, I feel like there'll be, you know, different organizations willing to volunteer to come in on the donated goods. We've had outstanding cooperation with the churches. I mean, Abby knows more about that than I do. She dealt with that way more than I did, but it's just outstanding. Nikki Waters, his group, that's just a few names. I don't want to even mention names, because there's so many. And just outstanding. So I feel like they're going to join in together. And with those Guard people here, we still may have pods. We're going to have a pod at Coswell Fire Department. We've got pods up in the Yakin Valley area. What I mean by pod, that's just the point of distribution, you know, different fire departments, food, water there. And I'll let them, I'll let them deliver to the pods and keep, you know, keep things going with the food. Now, their meal's ready to eat, you know, it's certainly not chicken alfredo or something of that nature, but it is food, it is water. Once FEMA opens up that water contract, now it takes a while to get it going, but once it gets going, they can, they can just pour tractor-trailer loads of, loads of stuff in here. And that was our, that was our philosophy with this, to have someone to put this thing. And you know, 90,000 foot, 90,000 square feet warehouse don't come available every day.
I hate to ask this question, but I'm sure that the building can be secured. And if it can be secured, do we need any security there? Because of, you know how this craziness happens, and when people find out it's a warehouse, and it's got all kinds of stuff in it, and people may do some stupid stuff. If we're not operating at 24/7, which we don't need to be, but anyway.
And Mike, I can't speak accurately on that. I feel pretty confident, because Hickory Springs, to my knowledge, when they were in operation, I don't think they worked 24 hours. So I feel pretty confident they can. And I know it's fixed in, and we can always make some arrangements, you know, to do the best we can with that. And I mean, I haven't been in the building in a long time, and that'll be on my agenda in the morning to be down there. If everything's executed, then, I mean, we're full speed ahead at least getting it in position to open up.
I'm sure the Sheriff could probably help us if we deem necessary.
That's within the city limits of Lenore, so we can probably...
I'm sorry.
They have to contract it through us, because they can't handle it all.
Yeah, and that's something we can work out with Sheriff, we can work out with Chief, and we'll, if that becomes a problem.
Is the owners carrying the insurance on the building, or is the county going to carry it?
We have the general liability, and it would be applicable to that building, because we leased the building. So our general liability will cover it.
And I can also attest to that, because we just got a, we just got a lesson on that about, no more than an hour and a half ago, because we also have another project we're working on that does, all we are count as the middleman, because we're looking to host a regional shelter here in Caldwell County. Now, that is at no expense to Caldwell County, but it's going to be a regional shelter. And we, through North Carolina EM and a local owner, we're probably going to lease a building as early as tomorrow. But where I'm going with this is we got a lesson on how General Statute 166A works. You know, Statute 166A makes, makes the state of emergencies that Chairman Church signed Wednesday or Thursday of last week. Then that basically puts us out of the liability business. That's in the General Statute. Yackip Attorney Lackey, you know, I'm sure familiar with that, but it basically puts us almost at the point of being immune to that. And because we are under a state of emergency, but we're also under a state of, a state of emergency, Governor Cooper, I think, signed that about the same time we did. So an answer other than a general liability certificate, we should be...
Yep.
I assume the owners are responsible for maintenance on the building?
Yes.
That's correct.
Has anybody been in the building, see if it leaked or anything during all this weather?
I drove around the building after the storm. I drove around it on Sunday, and it didn't, and y'all know that area, it sometimes floods back there, but it didn't appear that any water had gotten up to the property. We have access to the building beginning at 8:00 in the morning. I had been in the building a couple weeks prior with a potential industrial client that was looking at it, but I've not physically been in the building since we started negotiating this. But they have been.
I mean, we don't want to get a bunch of food and everything, it'd be leaking everywhere.
They have been, because they still had a couple pieces of equipment in there. And so they started on Monday, really getting the rest of their stuff out of there, knowing that, hoping that we would get to a point to where we could start putting disaster recovery supplies in there this week. Doesn't mean that they would tell me necessarily, but I would hope. I mean, they're based out of Conover, they're local folks. I think they would, they would be honest with us.
Hickory Springs has always been a good partner for the county.
Yeah, been a good partner for years.
Yeah, and longstanding business. I think their overall general heart that I've ever known them with, they're just trying to help.
I think, Jeff, what I was most impressed with when we started this, is the building's not been vacant. You know, I mean, I mean, they was, there's a good possibility, there's people that are doing things almost every day. It ain't like it's been vacant for months or years.
Sheriff, I'll make the motion for this building for warehousing for emergencies.
Again, I trust that our attorney has read the contract. We're...
I have, and the contract does require us to carry general commercial liability insurance. Jimmy has, Jimmy Harrison's been notified to make sure that's in place. And, yep, we review. Legally okay. I can't testify to the condition of the building, but from a legal perspective.
Got to be pre-audited by Tony, because it requires payment. Just to clarify, we're renting it for three months with an option for six additional months. I really think you're going to need those. Do we have any other options after that?
I think we can negotiate an additional timeframe and amendment to the contract, if we think we need it beyond that.
I got you.
Because yesterday, when we was in this, Chairman, that we, I said, well, minimum three months. And then, like you said, with the magnitude of the damage above us, it can play longer than that.
Will we communicate with other counties, or do we want to be careful about that? But since we have, since we'll have a regional area to be, not only ourselves, but other counties that are affected, if they know that there's, there's some warehousing available that's out of the danger zone, will you guys handle that and communicate whatever's necessary?
When the word 90,000 square feet comes up, they communicate with you. You don't have to worry about you communicating with them.
So you're saying these people be sending volunteer to help work the warehouse?
Well, I wouldn't guarantee that. The word blows out, because I needed a little bit of guidance from them. And you know, once that word gets out, it's spread like wildfire. You know, the first thing comes up, well, we do regional. I said, well, let's get started first, and we'll evaluate that as we go.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. LaBrosse made the motion, so I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's unanimously, so.
Thank you.
Go forth and give us a warehouse door.
Certainly will. Thank you.
All right. What's the next agenda item?
The next agenda item is the budget revision.
All right. And that budget revision, to give us a number, is, I'm solid earlier, but like a 3 something. Two. A budget revision of $2.3 million. This is for some expected grant revenues that's probably coming in. We feel very confident it'll come in over this whole national disaster contractual for our water line breaks. And we've had already several of those, and so we anticipate more of those. But that's in the amount of $150,000. And then contractual for our debris removal and warehouse rental that we're covering now, we've done that at $2.1 million. And then we had to make some emergency purchases of equipment, just in the immediate, and those were some UTVs and various other things, an amount of $50,000. And then, charge expense related to the waived fees of $10,000. But that gives us a grand total of $2,310,000 to make in a budget revision to get things rolling. Has anybody got any questions about those?
Now, that debris removal, is everything set up at the old landfill for that? Is that where it'll go?
Actually, no, sir. We had the debris contractors and the site consultants come and look at that, and they actually asked us to go to another location because of the topography, to be able to turn these large vehicles and get them in there quickly. So we're going back to the Evergreen site. It was already a pre-approved site. They're asking that we use that one, and it will be processed on-site, and then we can transport it wherever we need it. We'll reuse that old material to do slope stabilization at the old landfill up there. And it can also go to the new landfill and use that for slope stabilization. They're excited. You'll be the first to hear, other than the managers who met this afternoon, the debris contractors will be in town on Monday. So they're ready to go, they're eager to get started. I'm actually getting calls now from other counties to help consult with how to set it up. Us in Watauga County were the first approved. Initially, they were going to wait until the next DOT board meeting, and that was the day to try to get onto the agenda. The Secretary of Transportation waived that requirement and authorized the division engineers to allow us to enter into these memoranda agreements for DOT, because we are working with our contractor through North Commerce and Management on DOT right-of-way. So all the paperwork was completed earlier today.
Will that just be for our county, or is that a regional thing too?
It'll be just for our county. Judge Keener's calling me. Sorry, let me try to get rid of him there. Also, what you're looking at is a larger, this is kind of secondary, a much larger operating, all four counties work together under one RFP for contract management with FEMA. And it'll probably be somebody like Brock Long's company, or someone of that, Hagerty, a mega company that can come in and help us, not with just today's emergency, but future mitigation strategies, to get as much money into our communities as we can, help with future flooding issues, rebuilding roads, bridges, those kinds of things. Because now we know where the floodline is, and there's going to be a lot of effect of infrastructure in our county. That RFP, we're actually negotiating right now. Anthony Starr and I have been working on that all day, and we should have something out probably by the first of the week, to get proposals from these larger companies for a bigger management strategy.
No, just the aggressives that we did to get the debris hauling going. This, all of these are pre-negotiated contracts with NCM and FEMA. One of the concerns always in debris management is there's a lot of fraud that always happens in debris management. These contracts are already pre-existing. So that means Caldwell County didn't have to go and enter in contracts with these big, you know, these big debris bringers. We don't do debris every day. We don't have a subject matter expert. So they made the determination three to four years ago to go up, and the contractors and the, when you're dealing with this, the contractors, you've got one, is one contractor, one contractor's doing the pickup, and you've got another organization that's monitoring. It almost works using the same thing as a construction at risk manager. That's kind of the same process that we deal with. We're very fortunate, yeah, to get this going as quick as we can. Most of the time, it's not that quick.
I'm astounded. I am, because I know what red tape and dryer can go on and try and get something done. And I was in the all-hands meeting Monday evening, and this was all coming to fruition at that point, Monday, so.
And also, they'll pick up all kinds of debris, not just vegetate. You know, you got your, because there's always going to be washing machines and refrigerators and everything, everything in the world. They'll do it all.
Can't, absolutely. So they'll go up on Wilson's Creek?
Well, that's, now, that's going to be, that's going to be soil and water, deal with that, cleaning out them streams. That's, Mike, that's a whole other ballgame. We ain't ready for that. Whole other ballgame.
This is basically homeowners that can get something to the right-of-way, state right-of-way, if they can get it there.
I was just thinking about that refrigerator up in the tree.
And, yeah, traditionally, of course, Caldwell County don't do roadside pickup. And if you, you know, if the organization can, or if the individual can get it to the road, they'll pick it up. Now, that's where I talk about that VOED, Volunteer Organizations in Disaster. You know, you've got an elderly couple or something that, you know, lives in anywhere in Caldwell County, this, you know, just not able to get that to the road, that's where we start that. It's almost considered kind of like an unmet needs.
Can we, maybe it's through Abby, but you know, a lot of these churches and organizations that are doing, going out, like our church is going out Saturday and doing, you know, cutting up trees and stuff, maybe we can communicate with the churches or all those organizations to say, okay, hey, make sure we get that to the road.
Yeah, we're going to start a new campaign starting tomorrow. About that, debris pickup will begin October 7, and will run through November 22.
Put that in every church bulletin.
Nikki Waters, so Tori helped me compile all of the names for the meeting that we held on Monday, and she put it in a spreadsheet. So from that spreadsheet, Nikki's secretary created an all text all to that group. And so we can send it out to them too, just to make sure everybody gets it.
You'll start to see it more and more. We'll probably bore everybody to death, but they'll get tired of hearing it. FEMA provides us with a wonderful graphic that shows you exactly what you need to do. It's very clear. And that'll be a big operation, but we'll just focus on that. I need to run and take care of that all-hands meeting unless y'all have questions for me. We've got about 40 guests we need to work with.
Thank you for everything you've been doing with the whole operation, everything. I've sat in on those all-hands meetings and, yeah, thank you very much. And I know, I know you're not going to take the credit, but there's plenty of people in our, in our county, Jeff and many others that are in this room, and that are at the all-hands meeting that deserve a thank you.
We're blessed to have such a good team.
Yes, sir. One more thing, Mr. Chairman, and I've worked with Ashley on this, we've worked with Ashley. One of the things that these contractors want to do, and they may not be enough, they want to work aggressively to hire as much local as they can. I mean, they stated, that's almost the first thing out of their mouth. We're looking to do a job fair, maybe as early as next week. And there's going to be, and they're well-paying jobs and stuff. Some officers are going to be nothing more than sitting there with an iPad, and, oh yeah, here's how much is coming in, oh yeah, here's how much is coming in. So we're aggressively going to do that. I mean, now, the magnitude of this in Western North Carolina, now, there's not enough contractors in Caldwell County to do that, and we know that. But they're going to try their best to hire as local as they can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. See you later.
As long as we don't have any other questions, because it's long to digest, but it's all reimbursable.
To the board, any questions about FEMA stuff, things of that nature, feel free, you have my number, feel free to call me.
How long will it take to get reimbursed from FEMA on most of this stuff? Year, two years?
No.
Will they pay us as we've spent out, or?
What we do, Jeff, we file a, we file a worksheet, and it goes, it's somewhat complicated. It files into a portal, and you send, and you send it to the portal, and then they'll reimburse you. Best case scenario is two to three months. But now, let's take into the magnitude of this disaster, but it's nowhere near as big as COVID. Because now, remember, COVID took in all 50 states and every territory we have, every jurisdiction in America. So now, this is, you know, basically come up the East Coast. You've got Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, I think even Virginia, and definitely Tennessee. So the magnitude of this is nowhere near the, even though as big as it is, it's nowhere near the magnitude of COVID, because, you know, there's not that many jurisdictions involved. We aggressively, I think we've talked about it, that we want to file, they're going to invoice us, I think it's every 15 days or every 20, something to that nature, and that's when we want to work a project. We probably want to do a project per month that we get to FEMA. So there's always money coming back in based on the budget revision that y'all are voting for. Now, that's on the debris. On the other stuff, we could, as soon as maybe a week, week and a half, start, start putting stuff in. All of our overtime, sir, I mean, that's the same way it was in COVID. You know, I'm very proud during COVID, we brought $1.5 million back in this county. And it's going to be the same type of people doing it. I mean, you know, unfortunately, we've got experience doing it. And, you know, you got to dot a lot of i's, it costs a lot of t's dealing with FEMA, but we feel pretty aggressively that we can, that we can recoup a lot of this. One of the things in North Carolina is it's always going to be 100... One of the things in North Carolina is it's always going to be 100%, because you've got the way FEMA works, 75, 25. A lot of times, federal government pays 75, local government pays 10, state government pays 15. We're always been 100% on there. Something though, too, and I had a meeting, we all had a meeting with Destin on Saturday, there is tremendous amount of personal bridges, driveways, and things of that nature that is flat-out gone. Okay? FEMA don't pay for that. They, they just flat-out don't. But in years past, the legislature has committed money to do that. So, that's something that I encourage you to talk to Destin about, to talk to other legislators about, is to allow, is to let the legislature appropriate money to do that. Because I can absolutely tell you, all across western North Carolina, all their legislatures, all their, all their commissioners is having the same type of conversations, because they're, it's, it's massive.
All right. Any other questions? I'll make it in the form of a motion that we approve this budget revision, $2,310,000 for this project and ongoing projects, and I'm sure we'll be coming back to address more a little later if this is getting us started in, in that direction. So, no other questions? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, that gives you contracts, you, all, everything to run with for now.
Correct.
All right. Thank you for everything that you do with. And I'm not going to brag on him too much, but I remember Jeff when he was just a boy from game. Right now, he's, he's got us all, taking care of us all, and money and reimbursement.
We expect this to be done in a couple weeks.
No pressure. Come on out, hell. You've been down for four days, you know.
All right. Anything else for this meeting, Abby, that we need to?
Those were the only two things for this meeting. We'll just adjourn this one.
So, I hear a motion that we adjourn the emergency call meeting. We'll label it that way. All right, and have a motion to adjourn our emergency call meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. And so, then, I'll declare the special call meeting.